Okay, ready? All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, October 11th. So officially called this meeting to order. We're gonna do a quick roll call and because we have so many folks here with us today, I'd love to go on the table and just say who you are, name or pronouns, and then if you'd like to say the school you're from as well in the role, that'd be great. I'll start currently over. They done Director District One.
Jan Bolodak, she heard District Two.
Jennifer Jones, Director of Special Education, and she heard Tammy. She heard School Social Worker at Capcation.
School Social Worker at Thorndike, she heard.
I'm Claire Fulkin, she heard pronouns, and I'm one of the two school counselors at Showalter.
I wanted to come with the class of high school, you, you can, there's no else.
And I am Lou Summer, I'm one of the other counselors at Foster, and I also, she heard.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Borche, Chief Executive Officer, she heard.
Hello, Erin Redon, Director of Security.
Babe Larson, DM, District Five.
In the Morris, going river, she heard.
What burned in Superintendent, DM.
Thank you all so much for that. So welcome, everyone. Welcome to our guests. If anyone is joining us online, I'm really excited for to be having this conversation. I think this is something that we've been talking about a long time as a board. I've had some, I've had the fun of having some individual conversations with some of you, and I know that you all are incredibly passionate about the work that you're doing. And we are equally as passionate as helping you in helping you have the resources you need to do the work more successfully. So I think I can speak for definitely myself and likely at least some of the members of the board, but I want to give you all opportunity to share as well, but like my hope for today is that it's just kind of a conversation, right, hearing about we've got some president, you know, got some information. I'm assuming that y'all put together around what's happening at your schools already. But you know, we really want to like hear, you know, besides what's on paper, what's really, what's really going on? Like how we can holistically as a district ensure that we're supporting you all and your students. So that's kind of my hope. If there's anything else that any of the other directors wanted to add about your hope for this time.
I would like to know, did you guys have input on this?
You did.
Yes. You, you put them together, Jennifer, I just.
They were great. They did the Venn diagram themselves. Yeah, the team, not me.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So with that, I'm not really sure exactly where we want to start, but if, I don't know if you wanted to kick it off, but we just kind of want to.
Oh, if we heard from the elementary and secondary, we'll know what we're going to do and then hoping out the questions.
That sounds great. We're gonna start, we're gonna go out and say.
Before we start our conversation, I've in my past life, I was, one of my past lives, I was an English, high school English teacher, and I used to tell my students all the time, show, don't tell, show, don't tell. So in that spirit of showing before telling, I thought it would be great if I could just lead us in a mindful moment, which is an SCL practice that a lot of educators use. Our teachers at the high school often use it to start class, to help students kind of be grounded. And I know like those of us that work with one-on-one with students, we often use it with students one-on-one, just especially if they're anxious or agitated or just feeling a lot of things. So with that, I will just invite everybody to, just in for this, you can leave your eyes open if that feels more comfortable. You can lower your gaze if that feels a little too low or even close your eyes. So whatever feels right in this moment. And I just invite you to feel, starting with our feet, feeling our, the weight of our feet on the ground, maybe wiggling your toes a little. Moving up, feeling the weight of your legs, resting on the chair. Feeling your spine upright, but not uptight. Feeling your shoulders, your neck, your head, maybe moving to either shoulder a little gentle, shirt, or your neck a little gentle, toes from side to side. Take a deep breath in. And then let's watch. Now, and raise one of your hands, stomach level. And spread your fingers wide. I'm gonna do a practice called starfish breath. So spread your fingers wide, you got a star or starfish. So spread all your fingers, reach out. And with your other hand, take your index finger and just gently place it on the base of your thumb. And we're just going to gently trace up your thumb, and as we trace up, we're going to inhale. And as we get to the top and trace down the index finger. So we're just gonna keep doing that, inhale. Let's go. That's in. In. Scale. Well. That scale. And we're just gonna go back, going back to where it comes, inhaling on your front arm, on the way up, inhale, and on the way back. Moving a couple of shoulders. Just lower the fingers, spin the left. And gently gently opening your eyes if they're a little. And just notice how you feel, just notice how you feel.
Thank you.
Usually it's all like, oh, anybody want to share? I use, I've got their local needs on faculty, but when I look, when I look through some contacts, I incorporate. Like calm ass, and second years ago, I think we got a pretty, so every time I was five, I assumed that parents had definitely been to the calm ass. Now we're incorporating, I like, a little therapy too, like loads of French oil, it was easy to say that. One thing we incorporate that and smell, and anything that gets the student distracted from whatever it's there in that moment. That's my name is kind of too. Sometimes for itself, too.
So we decided, since Tuck will is unable to be here, that we just speak as a team, an elementary team. And really just everything mostly is in here. We understood that the difference between SCL and mental health maybe was the top of the focus. And is that the direction you want us to go?
So the, the kind of the intent around that is, you know, we've been talking a lot around mental health, and we've also been talking a lot around social emotional learning, and I think there's a lot of ways in which they're very clearly, right? And I think this is a really great visual, so thank you so much for doing that. Like there are so many ways in which they overlap, but there are also ways in which they're different. And so I think some of it was just about really helping us as we're continuing to engage in these conversations, knowing what we're talking about when. And then, yeah, so, so.
Sure. So for me, and please jump in whenever you want. When I think of social emotional learning, I'm really focusing on those competencies. I speak to castles' competencies and those skills that we want children and adults to acquire to lead lives that they're able to solve conflict, they're able to participate in relationships, they're able to have all of those skills in order to be successful, right? Those soft skills which employers follow them, that really employers are looking for, that makes people successful humans. And so a lot of our work, if not almost all of our work, really is in that arena. And then for as far as mental health goes, we really, I'm thinking of things like depression, anxiety, some behavior disorders. Self-harm, we see PTSD and a lot of trauma. But we're not treating mental health, right? We're not treating that. We have it present in our schools. We do a lot of short-term crisis intervention, and we of course support our students with mental health every single day. But we're not therapists and we're not mental health practitioners. And so I think that's where it's a little bit confusing when people say, oh, our mental health, our kids' mental health. And I really like to use the term student well-being. And because I feel like that covers everything in our students' lives that they look to us for support for. And so that's kind of the term I've been using that really I feel like covers everything that we do. At least I can speak for elementary. And so that's how I view, I think of SCL as, you know, helping our students cope, helping them learn how to interact with their peers, ask for help, doing all of those, those social skills, and also how to regulate their emotions, how to do all of those things that a lot of us didn't learn when we were that age, and some adults still. So that, that's, that's where most of our job lies. And of course, in the middle of the Venn diagram, we're serving all of our students, right? So in our care team, when we're doing ruler, check-in, check-out, all of our daily practices are serving all of our students, some with mental health diagnoses, some with undiagnosed mental health diagnoses, but all students. So I hope so far that's, okay, please interrupt me. I could talk for, as most of you know, I can talk forever about this. Do you have anything you want to add? So I guess my question might be is, do you have any questions about any of the things that we put into our Venn diagram? Or what that looks like, or what is working, isn't working?
You guys view yourselves as kind of triage nurses in a way?
Yeah, you know, a lot of times we are, almost more than that though, because the triage, I feel like it's like we refer people to other people.
Right.
And we don't unfortunately get to do a lot of that. We are, we are the ones then problem solving and figuring out next steps, which is often us, are the next steps. So we're just talking to ourselves and figuring that out. Or each other sometimes if we're lucky and happen to have a moment at the same time in the day. But you can see it like that, you know, when we take in information, we look into what's happening, whether it be, you know, peer conflict, whether it be a behavior that's presenting, whether it's a crying kindergartner, whether it's any situation you can think of that occurs in elementary school. We have that automatic like, what would that sound our head of, okay, what would be the next step? And so in that way, yes, triage, that makes perfect sense and kind of like a constant diagram of flowchart, right? Of it, yes, if no, then you do steps A, B, C.
So there's somebody else in the district who can actually refer a student for some mental health issue, or how does that work?
Yeah, so great question. So things that changed a lot since COVID. We used to have a very healthy relationship with Raze, Metinary Youth Services, who at least at Thorndike, once a week had a practitioner on site, which was wonderful. And that is what we need. However, when COVID came, and not just with Raze, who has now child payment, with all of our counseling agencies that we refer to, they had very strict orders, for lack of a better word. You know, you try, make three attempted contacts, if you don't hear back, you're closing the case. And so a lot of my students were just dropped without notice to me, families, kids, because it was hard to get in touch with people when the world shut down. And so a lot of those connections were lost, and then these community mental health agencies went through a crisis of their own. And that crisis continues, the crisis of low staffing. You know, schools are hiring a lot of mental health practitioners that pay a lot better than community mental health pays. And so they're having a very hard time staffing their agencies, which in turns, in turn affects how we can get support for our students. And most of the agencies that we shared, and you can tell the elementary version is like rainbow colors, and I think you saw that spreadsheet, so one elementary, one secondary, I mean, you knew which one was which. So those are all agencies that we had and or have relationships with that are Apple, that work with Apple Health. And so those are the agencies that we have varying degrees right now of relationships with. But no one right now is in the elementary schools on a consistent basis for at all, if at Thorndike. We have, I think, one person who will come, actually no, they're at Showalter, not everyone. We have no one coming into the school anymore to see students. And that is mostly because of staffing shortages. And they're just, kids are sitting on wait lists for a very long time. So back, looping back to your question, we're, it's, we're in crisis right now for kids with mental health needs and even just well-being needs that are more than what the elementary social worker can do. You know, because we can't, we do some individual counseling, but really we're trying to maximize our expertise and our skills to serve as many kids as we can. And so of course, we will see kids individually until they get the need. But it's also then maxing out our capacity to serve as many students as we can.
So I'm kind of curious, is in your, like your professional organizations, is anybody talking to the legislature? I mean, this sounds like a big state issue. And obviously it's been talked about a lot of times, but I'm just curious as to what, what's going on in that area? Is there people pounding on the list? I mean, I'm not even, I don't know. Yeah, I'm not, it sounds like a tough one to solve. I mean, it's a long term, it's a short term, it's a.
It is, you know, and well, it's, it's ironic because like the School Social Work Association in Washington is pushing for more mental health practitioners in schools, which then takes them away from community mental health, right? And so it's this terrible back and forth. And so while I believe that I think each elementary school needs a mental health practitioner, I also see what's happening in our community as well. But schools and why I do what I do, schools are the best place. And there's been many studies that most students, seventy-five percent of people with, with students with mental health disorders, they get their support from school. And so it's clear there was a seven-ish hours a day. That's why I do what I do, because I have that access. It's not an hour on a computer screen or even a. And so that's kind of the state of where things are right now.
Can you talk a little bit about how communities and schools is either adding to your work or taking away from your work?
Yeah, do you want to talk? Yeah, our, our community and school staff, Mr. Ty, he is amazing. He does a lot of, I would say, connecting with families for food, clothing, household items. He does social lunch groups. They're not therapeutic lunch groups, but they, you know, just buddy lunches. He does check-ins with students, very basic. There is no mental health involvement with that. But sometimes going into classrooms, helping a student with their work, you know, if they have trouble focusing and whatnot. So that's the majority of what he does.
Does it take some of the load off of you?
In some ways. Sometimes I don't always have time to run around and get bags of food and, you know, deliver them to people's houses. And he does a lot of that, which is amazing. So we kind of tag each other on that too. Or if I say a family needs this, he's able to go to the resource center and get what they need. You know, and sometimes students will just really, really want attention. It's not that they necessarily need anything, it's they want that attention. And if I am not available, which a lot of times I am not, but they just want like that social time, that one-on-one, or they want to invite their friends to lunch, like be able to do all that, you know, like I'll be like, so and so has been asking me multiple times, like, could you maybe offer a lunch? So we help each other a lot with that as well.
Did it work the same with Thorndike?
Yeah, you know, I think it really depends on who you have. I've noticed within the CIS organization, it really depends on the person. So we had the same person for three years, and we just started with a new person. And so it's been obviously different and both have been wonderful. But it's, it's more like Tammy would say, I mean, certainly I appreciate all the support. They have a fixed caseload of students they work with and which is great. I think right now she has about twenty or so students that she'll work with, and she's very complete. And she, she does a great job. I think what we're needing is like a deeper level, a more skilled, for lack of a better word, it sounds terrible because they're skilled, but just in, in mental health. And even more training in what we do. Like kids often tell me that they, I need to be cloned. Because, yeah. Yeah, so I think, I, I believe it's good support, and I would vote to continue having the CIS. It's, it's, it's definitely meeting a need. I think just checking in regularly and making sure each school's site coordinator is meeting the needs of the school would be a good thing.
And do we not have a, a social worker at Tuck yet?
Yes, there is, yeah. Last week, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so Tuck now has social worker and then SCI person.
Kind of like a high level question, I think, but it's kind of for everyone, just kind of throw it out. And I, you know, I think you spoke to something that kind of answers it a little bit for me, but thinking about, you know, our role as an educational entity and what kind of what is our role, knowing that we're not mental health providers to meet the mental health needs of our students. Knowing of course that like what I know about trauma and the impacts that that has on learning, like it is all so connected, and so it's hard to separate. But what, I guess, just what do y'all feel like our role like really is as an educational entity in addressing mental health for students?
If I can speak to, you know, so the secondary from what, whatever. So I'm excited about working on the Washington State County Council Program, because that outlines a lot of releasing out from some of the duties that are not focused for all, from all the way from like the elementary and middle school types, because then it makes us be more available to put in programs in place, lessons in place that will cover all tier one.
That program, say that again.
The Washington State comprehensive program.
Comprehensive.
It has to be mandated, I guess, for the classroom board council program. Yeah, so something to be, I'm excited about, because that's gonna help us get that framework today. I mean, it's the whole thing, right? And I think even what happens, a, a mental health therapist, if we go back when we worked with it, one, one therapist is not gonna be enough. So because there's a lot more students, so if we, if we focus on, okay, the tier one, put in those supports correctly, when something is actually gonna get into the class. Because you're right, I mean, right now, when we came in, we were getting email from the agency, oh, by the way, we're not speaking any more.
Can I ask a clarifying question too? When we say tier one supports, I think I just heard you say like that, that's what we're talking about, like that proven, the SEL related things, right?
Everybody.
All students.
That's cool.
All friends.
Okay.
Like here's what you can do, like some of the mindfulness action. Then there's a tier two, what, what's happening that, you know, and then the level, you have a lot of level three. So it's like, I think that's a year ago, like.
Well, yeah, it's usually like a tribal and tier one, we used to say, which here, tier three is like more suited, yeah.
So I think looking at what I started doing, these are we're doing, social worker, counselor, then what are something that, that maybe somebody else can do, so we can allocate our time to actually be doing the stuff to, that we get it, because we can't control the state by as far as the mental health. I mean, it's, it's almost like a battle between. It's like, like now, and also even some there, but they're going to another agency, you know, and, you know, but it's a.
So I'm curious about this, tell me about this comprehensive counseling program, is this something that, who's, who's running this? OSBI, so the legislature gave OSBI money to, so this is like a.
I don't know if it's money.
Well, it sounds to me like it's a work group, that's.
So that would be it.
Okay, this is last year. Okay, so, so we're, as a school district, we're supposed to be developing this plan.
Yeah, if you could put up the Showalter slide, I went a little rogue with my layout. Because SCL and mental health are lenses that we use to look at our different interventions, but all of them fall under a comprehensive school counseling program. And I wrote, see how it's built fifty thirty, that's the one requiring these plans of districts, but they point you to the Aska National Model, which is the basis for a school counseling program. And that's the format that we've been working with at Showalter. And so we have a social worker, and they're amazing for connecting students to those resources, and we work as a team. So the social worker does part of the comprehensive school counseling. And then school counselors, we do these things, and then we also provide for academic development, career development. And, you know, so we do other things, yeah, to, to develop a whole student, but we all work as a team to address these things. And so I just, yeah, it provides a framework. And then they also list appropriate and inappropriate duties. So even though we've been trying to accomplish this plan at Showalter, we still are creating schedules, we're still doing lunch duty, and that takes huge amount of our time away from student servicing. And thanks to this new legislation, we've been relieved of a few of those duties, and we are seeing payoff in just being able to provide more services to students.
Like, you know, I think all of you who, who know, we have a fourth counselor at the high school. And, and it's interesting, Jen's not able to be here, but she's been in college and very talented, like, oh my gosh, like I, I had an idea, but now that I'm here, it gives, I'm learning so much of the things that you are doing, because the high school level is some sort of the middle school too. Now that the academic graduation requirement that we all know are, you know, they're like more changing every year into different, you know, different kinds of things. So students, we have to make sure they're, they're graduated with all the requirements of graduation. And on top of that, it's, you know, the mental health, they're dealing with social, emotional, and all that stuff. So it is, it can be a lot, so that's why it's like a meeting from the outside, oh, okay, but it's actually what Aska's recommending, what the number of students about. So it, it, for me, it's like great to have another counselor, like, yeah. Then we can start moving into having all these other plans we want to put in place, because we probably are, hopefully gonna have some time to do that. And, and it'll always help, I apologize, it's having another counselor doesn't mean we're gonna be doing all of that, it's not counseling. Uh and and it'll always help, I apologize, it's having another counselor doesn't mean we're gonna be doing all of that stuff that is not counter appropriate. Without a way, you know, coming up to the goal.
So so these are the things that you were doing before, you said like lunch duty and so what other and. This this is sounding to me like an unfunded mandate from the state because they're saying. Okay, you guys, we're just gonna say you don't need to do that, but oh. Yeah, yeah, so I'm just kind of curious, yeah, like what else were you doing that you're not doing now? Or stop close to doing that.
I think the American School Counselor Association.
Okay.
And then there's the state association, Washington State, who's one of the associations that we all try to go to their yearly conference, which is great. And they're the ones that aren't advocate, you have to buy advocate.
Yeah.
They're the ones really have and they're pushing for this, so.
Yeah, okay.
Make sure it happens at the state level to get more like they were getting counsel saying, hey, you. Or if they wanted to do this, then we're past, we're doing all these tests, and they are taking away somewhere trying to do it.
Right.
My understanding that the Esper funds were at least largely intended to serve social emotional purposes for every fellow ever.
My first problem is they're gone in two years. So I'm just, I mean, I'm I'm, you know. In my mind, as a legislative rep, I'm rolling through my mind about what I need to tell legislators about this issue, it's nice, I mean, it's great.
Right.
Counselors should do what counselors should do, but.
Yeah, it's more against about like a better use of your resources.
Yeah.
For their master's degree.
But then we may need, yeah, yeah, but then, yeah. Yeah, you know, for sure, but then we may need another, you know, parent educator or another, I mean, just cover whatever else is. That's why I'm trying to get a sense of what else would need to be covered. Is there anything other than?
At the high school.
Okay, so assessment, so, okay.
A lot of the part of war, yeah, that could be done by somebody else, but. There's a lot, it you know, it takes a lot of time to plan and and whatever.
That sounds like it should be specialized dollars or special person. Okay.
They gotta do it, so there's no money for it.
No, yeah, that private court's interesting because it is, you know, unfunded mandate, like we talked about before, um in general.
Because this looks like a like a shell game. Do this, but oh, well, you can't, everyone's gonna do that.
Because it does, especially now, and I'll be all notice that, you know, things are coming that come from medical providers, they're like, oh, wow, a lot of. Bring that here to the house. A lot, and I'd be like, although, so then we have to coordinate with the teachers, let them make the plan and then send them out, and here's your job, that's like. There's going to increase.
So what? Elementary, this is, you know, this stupid question, elementary has social workers, high school has counselors. That are in secondary has counselors, but you also have social.
We have, we have, we now, starting the last year, you're, this is where we have, we have a social worker and we never had before. One, Diego, yeah, who's grade and the middle school.
So do you, do they prob, do they do more of what you've been doing?
I think it all.
I know, I know.
Say you're the academic, the social, but I mean, that's a high school, not about. Like Diego's not checking graduation requirement, you know, all the all the graduation academic part is more that.
He's, yeah, focused really on like providing, connecting families and students with resources who are maybe more. More of a crisis situation generally, like um and also. Because like small group meetings, um with students.
And you, do you both have a SEL person also?
I guess do.
Yeah, they function more as like a team. Um so trying to take more of a restoring of like discipline, but they are who responds to like. Student intercourse of complex and they manage all of the check-in, check-out and any disciplinary. Measures.
Does that include proactive measures or is it just reactive disciplinary?
Um I don't want to speak someone else's program because I spend a lot of time in my own, so. I don't know, maybe you can invite them next.
Well, it seems like you're all doing GNSL work.
Yeah, for sure.
There are some agencies right now that were, there's one, second one of them, that is coming in and I think we find that now. They're gonna be a therapist, they're coming in very, I have a meeting. Uh maybe.
Yeah, I think when we talk about providers, even before the pandemic, it was was really difficult. Sometimes not just to not to find providers, okay, so they would meet with students who had apple care. But to meet with students who maybe had type one insurance, but then the family like to pay for a therapist, even with their insurance was. Uh completely unreasonable that, there was a lot of gaps even before, but. Like everybody said, and then the need has grown astronomically, um the counseling service has grown, just. What we've often experienced, so yeah, that's definitely changed such a whole.
Not only mental, but also, I mean, counseling service, particularly at high school, I watched over the years, you know, between running start and. Graduation pathways, I mean, that whole thing has got, you know, at least two or three times more complicated than it used to be, and so. And 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 then when you throw in that, oh, you gotta do that for for low income students who have never been to high school, you know, I mean, never been taught before, then it just, you know.
Yeah.
Which is why I advocate a lot for, you know, staffing based on need, so high five re-schools, we get more staffing. You know, that one.
I'll make fun.
Yeah, it makes perfect sense, the only problem is the districts that have sort of wealthy students don't want to do it, so.
Yeah, and when you think about like recommended day, what we're recommending, love for social workers and high need schools, is it be the one?
Yes.
Just a, and literally, we joke about, you know, like, oh, we need eleven of you.
Right. No, I I use that number too.
And it's, you know, we find it a lot, there's obviously totally appropriate, you know, agent needing that, you know, come in and. Like, you know, I think that's a high school level, like, sometimes, you know.
Um, from stable on and off, that's been, yeah, it was nice, we used to have a resource counselor too, all the time, and that that's been. But um those supports. Personally, yeah, they're doing, um, like, I think they're gonna start a small uh uh group for. Um young women, like a small, some some maybe maybe more than one, but they talk, they wanna talk about one group. And they're also doing with the after-school program with partnering with our teachers to to provide that, it's like, what would you thought of? But not a lot that I know of and maybe FPL um and nothing, not.
So then, let me ask you this, is a staffing question, so the legislature has added staff or that's coming in over the next three years. And the good news is that we have SGL, so we can front-load it and then, yeah, and my understanding when looking at it, basically that's two FTEs at the secondary level. Which it sounds like are being used for um a social worker and an additional counselor, so that we cover that. And then at elementary, I think I guess like one point four. FTE, which it sounds like is being used as an SDI or social emotional intervention at all the schools, is what I'm see, what I'm seeing. So the question is, you know, if there was, well, first of all. Probably rhetorical question, but do you think that's sufficient? And if not, you know, what would be the next, you know, functional person? You know, if you had one more FTE from the legislature, let's say, where would you put it, do you think? It's probably a different, maybe a different question for elementary and secondary.
Now, where would you put it? It's kind of funny because we have no offices. You know, our community is in school person, then a printer closet.
Right.
So I would.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and we would, but that's like, that's a need, isn't that we need offices, even if we're having counselors to meet with students. You know, they're all looking out the same way, a conference room, which is also where our MLO parents work out of, like, there's just no room. Um and confidential space is super important for those services. So just one thing to consider is we have nowhere to put them, but we will take them.
It sounds like one of the biggest means is to get the mental health stuff covered, so you aren't dealing with it. So so that you have someone to refer your kids to, they get stabilized or. Yeah, so they aren't keep, they aren't coming back to you for this.
Yeah, and I. Um, I just wanted to speak to to how it is different um in elementary, you know. After thirteen and after they can seek their own services and. It's very challenging to go through the whole process and, you know, get. Parents, the different cultures to, you know, kind of understand this does not mean your child is crazy, this does not mean, you know, they belong in a a different place. And um so it takes a lot of um work behind the scenes to get to a place where families are on board and accepting and. Um and so that piece is hard and then you can get to the point of, okay, we're ready and then there's. And so having someone on site that they are, that's their job, right, is to do that work and there's someone, oh, it's Ms. Goodman, or, you know, that that's, we know her, she's good, you know, like families know, that people know. Um it's just so important. Um so for me, if I'm gonna get used, I would strongly advocate for a mental health practitioner. Um and or someone with behavioral um experience um to help just with. I'm a very good proponent of early intervention and of prevention. And um that's not what's currently be happening, it's just reactive practice. And um our youngest students, you know, we are meeting their needs early and y'all won't be seeing what you're seeing. The least as much um because their needs, their needs will be getting met and they'll be getting met the first time we're seeing something with them. And so as far as, you know, I am not a behavior person at all, I've learned to kind of sort of be. But when I see um behavior tax and these registered behavior people work, it's just. Magical to me because they can really get to the root of behaviors and sometimes then I can come in. Because there is a social emotional piece or a mental health piece. Um but so that piece to me also is is imperative. Um because it is in a way, it's prevention, right, they can come in before things get to be huge behaviors and referrals are written. And kids are labeled and, you know, we go down that road. Um and so to me, it's like, let's put a bunch of support early on in kids' lives and so families and kids are supported. Um early on and so that they're growing into these human beings that flourish and grow and are ready for middle school. And that you all aren't seeing students who are, you know, academically and, you know, emotionally, even years and years and years behind. Um so they can be present in class and learn and their brains are ready to learn, right?
It it's like in so many ways, we we should, we put our resources where the where the crisis is, right? Instead of saying, no, we're actually gonna gonna pause that, we know the crisis is happening, we're actually gonna shift our resources over here where we know that we can actually create. Some, right, yeah, yeah, um.
Yeah, I think that's what the whole SEL movement is.
That's what I think it's about.
Your functioning to you, but from a high school level, this is just personal, I mean, what we come in. But I have a problem with somebody who would would like oversee SEL curriculum and like roll it out. We've, I used to be the head of advisory, which means twice, we we did a lot of that, that stuff, just. I would just pull stuff off, you know, here's here's some, here's in life almost practice, here's this, here's that. Before we had rule or anything, I was just like creating stuff and throwing it to your advisory, but it would be, I think, super beneficial for high school students. To have that as an embedded curriculum, but somebody who can come in and manage that and like, because teachers are just like, I I will allow. You know, I'm kind of teacher, teacher, so.
Raising, raising, which is telling, they used to have a contact with the city of Dakota. And we found out last year because we're like, why did you tell us that United States didn't, and then we find out that, and they're like, oh, yeah, we checked them. Then go get, hey, I want to laugh here, I don't want to. So I'm curious to find out, like, why do they stop sending, you know, I think the elementary side of the, in the school, and we had one and it was over the box. Drop in a hall assessment. I think we, they 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 will have a staff now that's gone in a hall.
Yeah.
But that was, that wasn't me finding out, like, okay, did this didn't work, so pay them and.
Well, because, because it's switched over to child even.
Yeah.
I can't remember, well, the budget will be rolled out, you'll see what happened, but.
Also setting, setting up your idea, setting up a SEL curriculum, so that sounds like. Um it would potentially be ideal for SGLs to front-load it and set it up and then hopefully. You know, then it could be run kind of afterwards, if they would set up really well.
Uh yeah, I think like for students, then they learn the self-regulation.
Right.
Even even in high school, it's, they they're willing, because, yeah, they need knowledge.
Every student.
That's what I'm always looking for, anything that we can, you know, we have two more years of SGL, anything that we can. Suit up to set up something quality that then can be run, you know, without.
Continue on without, yeah.
Yeah.
So one of the, one of the challenges I heard was that the um advisory teachers weren't using.
Well, I saw, there wasn't, you know, it was just that kind of like, I I think that advisory is sort of a whole other. I won't open that kind of words, but it, you know, it is stopped by some folks, seen as an extra prep and then. Tried to make that lesson, but it's like, just, you go just press play or you could just read this line. Yeah, but I think that's where sort of that that staff training, like in in helping people become, okay, you don't have to lead a mindfulness exercise. You can, you can literally play a a video for two minutes that somebody else is talking. But just kind of helping people feel more comfortable um in maybe teaching something that's outside of their content area.
Because I, I want to speak for this, but too many hours. You know, on her own, like planning all these lessons before the COVID. And now it's like, oh my God, you can't do that, now because now everyone needs it. We're getting kind of older now to, you know, and moving forward value.
Yeah, there's there's restrictions to relearn, in my opinion, I mean, they have like some really solid tools. The there is a curricula, but it's very not friendly to use. It just, and they they're really in the training, they don't even speak to the curricula, it's not even talked about. It's just the the mood meter, the blueprint, at a moment and a charter. Um, which is, I love, which is good.
And I think the important thing to remember about SEL practices is they're not just a thing that you do one time, right? They are ways that you engage, right, with students, ways that, so you're modeling as as the teacher, as the staff. As whoever um for for these things, and so it's, you know, it's taking the time to have that conversation about. The behavior that's happening, it's taking the time to really do those things, it's that fifteen minute check-in at the day. So I think there there's so many things, um so one question I have, I think it's probably specifically probably for over here. Um, uh we know that funding is a barrier, we know that people are barriers, right? Um the other, the amount of people that don't have people resources is is a barrier. Um, aside from that, we can't do anything about that. What, like, what is really getting in the way of feeling like, like getting some tangible things? Where that uh to infuse these things into our classrooms, like what do you feel like is the biggest barrier to getting some of these things?
I think, and I've talked very too much, Tammy, so feel free to tell me to shut up, but uh I think it's. The lack of understanding that like Maslow's hierarchy of needs. That first must come the safety and the food and the basic, like, all of that must come before any like higher level thinking and learning can happen. Um because of the pressure that teachers feel to teach every, all the things and do it well and get scores up and. Which is important, I'm not saying that it's not important, but if all of these other needs are not met, like. A traumatized brain sitting in a class is not retaining information. Um and I think it's that mindset shift that that needs to happen, that is. Um, and I think it's that mindset shift that, that needs to happen that is i- in the way, uh, systemically, I would say. Thoughts on that? And I know, I realize I work in a school district and I'm saying that learning is.
No, that's, that's true, right? And I think, I think if I think about, I mean, there's, there's. So I don't have much, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm the first one to probably say it. Um, you know, um, there's so much research, right, and so much data supporting exactly what you said, right? And so the reality is that if test scores are our thing, right, let's say, we are an educational entity, that's important, right? What is the root cause here that's actually preventing us of our test scores accelerating?
Right.
Um, and that is not, uh, a variety of things. What it is, it's, it's that we're missing some of these foundational things. So we don't have young people who are, where we're creating a container where they can learn. Um, and that's what I feel like we have an obligation, opportunity to do here. And that's what I want to see. It's like, how can we create that? Um, because the other stuff is gonna follow, the academic stuff, that's gonna come later. Um, you said something about a behavior specialist. Now I was curious, is there anyone in the school that, that does like A D A related work?
Yeah, I can feed it to that, yeah. So, um, we have two B P V As, two board certified behavior analysts. Um, and then we, they, we have R B Ts, either registered behavior technician or certified behavior technician, that then are supervised by the B P V As, and they support, uh, special education, special education, and all of them. Yeah, that's, um, yeah, because they are, are funded through special education. And so the, that's what we have now for students that, uh, have goals and objectives or identify needs in this area of challenging behaviors, whether it be internal or external. Um, and so they are the ones that can go through, um, to get A P P data, um, which is our, you know, we talk about gathering the data. They help represent data piece, try to find out what the pattern of behavior is, the function of the behavior, and then making a plan of behavior intervention plan to help support, um, that travel with all of that child that, that we have, we're all beginning the same page, same notes, we say, um, and the way we're, which we're addressing, the behavior needs. But yeah, they are specifically for special.
Because we used to have a behaviorist in at least the elementaries, right?
Or in the, I don't know.
I mean, Michael was there.
We had a special education.
Well, he was bad behavior. Okay, so we don't have a.
Well, and the reality to it that there's no way for them to be able to serve even all the special education students, any rentals.
Right.
So not even all the students with behavior goals and social goals, n- none of the social goals and not all of the behavior goals are even being addressed by them. So, um, while it's wonderful and they're really helping, especially L R C too. Like, they have been, I mean, I think with L R C too, um, it's just limited, wonderful, but limited.
I think that the need that our S E L team is focused on filling is behavior intervention for children with high A P S. And the need is overwhelming for them too.
I mean, when is the last time that y'all can remember a training, um, around like how to advance social emotional practices, either yourself or for your students? Um, and then has there been any training on the Washington State social emotional competencies?
Are you talking about the teaching staff or anyone, uh?
Like the ones, the S E L benchmarks, like the, the Washington.
The Washington.
The Washington.
No.
There hasn't been any training on this?
Okay. But, I mean, that would be something, I mean. Social workers, I mean, like, I think that would be something that would be offered at law.
Well, the Washington Public Association, uh, maybe that will get a lot.
But I think it should be everyone, right? Exactly. Because.
I mean, I got this stuff like. Workers, those who, but then.
I mean, I haven't ever, yeah. You know, because I think to your point, like, you know, I think there's probably a lot of feelings about S E L, right? Lucky feelings. Uh, what if we can really help folks understand, like, and get them bought in? Um, and so I guess I can do that. That was kind of one of the curiosities I had around the barriers. I think, I think there's a culture challenge, right? How to really, really move our district and help folks understand the benefits of social emotional learning, um, and how it can really impact. I think another thing that I just want to say, because it hasn't been said yet, I want to recognize that, like, social emotional learning is not new. Um, and it's actually was stolen, like many other things, from indigenous practices, um, and other cultures. And so, you know, we're talking about it as if it's new, um, and it's new in a lot of our, you know, these institutional settings, but it is not new. Um, and so even bringing awareness to that, right? And this isn't just a new fad that we're talking about. Um, like this is something that is deeply rooted in hu- our humanity.
Um, and one of the differences is that we, we want to individualize it, where anything from indigenous culture would be the community. So if there's a problem with the child, that's a problem with the community and the whole community gets involved. Yeah. Um, and, you know, I, I don't even think that happens in our classrooms.
I have a really good, because, um, we, we've also just been focused on like the school. But, um, we have to also be focused on our community and just, um, at the high school, this is, I, we were in fourth, fifth or sixth year of being a partner with, forefront in the school, which is the suicide prevention program, who knows? Um, and to just try to, the barriers, like one of the things that we are supposed to do, one is we train staff every year. Two is we train students with, I don't know, train our students to train their peers, um, in suicide prevention. And then the third element is we train, like, that happens by families and parents and us. Um, it's, it's, I mean, like, talk to the school, let's talk about suicide, yeah. It's like. It's, it's like, we really need, we need our whole community, right? We need our families, um. And I was like, what if we started with, like, let's talk about wellness? Let's talk, like, let's talk about all the wellness, like, social, like, mental, physical, but I, I think that's a piece too, we need our families to have opportunities to learn.
What if we just had health and quarterly district-wide wellness days? I don't, I don't know, you know what that could look like.
And then have it on, by the way, you know, you're invited to contribute.
Yeah, I talked about, like, you know, do you like your. We have number one.
And, and when you have a social emotional, if you know that, yeah, that people get it, like, by no program, they get, they get some of the whole stuff. And every year that we just have and train them, that is, thank you so much. It's really beneficial to hear that again. Uh, so we do have that at the high school level, we can come back and, uh, so, well, yeah, it's like.
But it's, it's definitely a collective, like, so we are families.
So it sounds like, you know, I mean, this area is, is big and there's a lot of things in it. And so I was going back to, um, you know, certainly Goodman needed to do a little paper on. Hope everybody's seen it, but I mean, it's, we need to kind of, I think, put together a plan, because if you start, problem is if you, if you start, you can get overwhelmed by all the stuff.
Yeah.
And so you need kind of a plan that you need to get in place. And, you know, one of the first things you have on your thing is universal screener. So to start, I mean, when you talk about how do we change the culture and the mindsets, you know, I mean, I would imagine that teachers, you know, have this wave of kids coming at them and if they don't, aren't trained in how to, you know, figure out, you know, okay, who's got a problem, who's got a problem? And, and, you know, I mean, I've been cracking up to know that, you know, there are some kids that are loud about their problems and there are some kids that are just absolutely silent and go into it. And unless you're really paying attention in some way, you're gonna totally miss them. And so, anyway, it's just, I mean, this, the structure of, of a screener and then looking at the data and this, I mean, all the things about the staffing, the professional development, it seems like we need, you know, that kind of a plan because, you know, we aren't going to be able to do everything at once, but at least if you have, you know, kind of where you're going. And so, anyway, I guess I would just advocate. I don't know if that's under your daily work, develop a plan or.
Yeah.
Somewhere, but.
I would love that to be enough stuff.
Yeah. And, and, and I think one, one thing that, and you spoke to too, like, you know, I, I think what we really need to figure out, I know this is a kind of a goal, uh, Dr. Hurdens, is how we are really collaborating across the district, right? You know, how, how are you all working as a collective team to resource share, to share knowledge, to do all the things that I know it's probably hard? And maybe there are things in the C B A that are not, I don't, I don't know that as in and out, but like, you know, if you, yeah, you know, I, I don't know if you're, you know, connected, solely connected to your school, we can't even like sport, but what are there ways in which we can really cross collaborate? Um, and, you know, even if it is, maybe a counselor from the foster high school goes to an elementary school once a week to support. I don't know, what could things look like? Huh?
Or just train the.
Or, or, yeah, or, yeah, you know, share, share, yeah, and really, you know, are, if there are resources that are being allotted to one school, even if it's just information resources, uh, then that's our job to say, why is that happening? Um, and how do we ensure that that, you know, unless there's a specific reason why it would only be applicable to one.
For, for us, there's a reason we don't have curriculum and are training for middle school students. So that, I'm middle and elementary, just high school, and we've, like, we've been having, getting, really.
And I think they're working that.
They're working, yeah, they've been working out. Yeah. Oh, that's, um, the, you know, forefront, yeah, that's, that's what you're, but there are a lot of.
Yeah, there are, there are definitely resources out there that we, you know, there's a, and, you know, and.
So even that first one, you want to learn a future, now we didn't look.
I think that kind of has been helpful as well, you know, then first of all, with human services means, I think there's a lot of kind of, we went. We're almost like it's not an aspect, we're like, oh, we would have, you know, and it's like even just like, uh, final four, for example, or, you know, there's kind of an agency that then got, that's easy to point for us and. You can do that more often, I would say, but we're gonna, um.
I think that I, I bring this up all the time. I think there are community resources that are available that maybe haven't been tapped. I mean, there's no reason why someone like me couldn't go in and sit with a kid that needs that attention an hour a day to call him. Even if I don't have any training, if it's in the classroom, I'm sitting there with a kid, there's all kinds of community folks who come in and we just haven't even tapped that resource. And I don't have to do it. You guys, I mean, you guys can't do it. We can't do it. I don't know how it happens, but, um.
This is six oh two. Um, thank you all so much for being here. I hope that this is just kind of like a part of the extended conversation because this work is never done. Um, so, um, yeah, thanks so much for being here, being open and. All right, folks, real adjourned. I think I need a motion in a second, all the things, okay. Um, our favor, hi, our.